Good evening, everyone. I'd now like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for order. The majority of the commissioners are present tonight. Vice Chair Cindy Greenold is absent, as well as Commissioner Kelly Hahn. But all others are present. I'd like to begin. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the commissioners, as well as Madam Clerk and the Town Planner, for all your work in regards to planning and zoning, and to wish you all a very happy holiday, a blessed and joyful holiday, and all good things in the new year, especially health to us all. So, amen. Let us begin with the approval of the December 13, 2023 Planning Commission Agenda. Do I have a second for the approval of the agenda?
Yeah, you do.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, pardon me. Discussion. Commissioner Brown?
Old Business, State Review of Critical Area. We haven't received that yet, correct?
Right. The state asked for another week, and obviously, they said they'd take another week.
So I would make a motion we delete that from the agenda.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? Thank you. The next item, the approval of the minutes of the November 15, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Discussion?
Yes. Corrections, I think. On page four, it says, Section 5 quorum in the middle of the page, underlined. I believe that should be Section 6, because that's what our printed copy that we have tonight is.
Oh. Say again, Commissioner Brown, where are you referencing?
Page four of the minutes, middle of the page, Section 5, it says, "Quorum." The copy that was distributed to us is, it's Section 6 in that copy.
Oh, not Section 5? I think it was 5 on the draft that we were working with, but once I went in there and got all the numbers correct, that's why the new draft is, but we can make that 6.
Just make...
Yeah.
I think it'd be clearer if it was...
Okay.
And the same thing with the next one, says new section. Oh, that's Section 9 on the copy that's...
Well, Section 9 is reflected in the, below the new section, so maybe we just have to put Section 9 where it says new section. Madam Clerk, will you just look at that and compare it with the...
What we actually did.
What we actually did, and then make it numerically reflective of that. Any further discussion? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, then?
Yes.
Yes, and did, second, did you?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. At this point, we will have public comment on any item on the agenda. Obviously, nobody's present other than us, and there's no ability, Madam Clerk, for people to call in to offer comment.
That's good.
All right, then we will move on. And as Commissioner Brown noted, under Item 5, Old Business, we do not have the, this PPA, the commission's review of the critical area regulations. Just to clarify, Sarah, the state, you anticipate receiving those when?
Yes, so they anticipated them end of last week, and I checked in, and they said they'll have them the end of this week.
Okay.
Which will allow me to get you guys' feedback.
Sure, so then...
Probably by the end of the month.
You're gonna, when you receive them, then you're gonna pass them on to Madam Clerk, and then we will receive a copy and...
Right, I'll, I will probably also kind of go in and provide comments for you on how to address them, and then send that over.
How to address what the...
Whatever their comments are, you know, depending on how their comments come back, I'll probably provide, you know, additional comments for how you guys might want to address stuff.
Okay, I see, okay.
Give you a whole package, basically.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And so, obviously, upon, after receiving that, then we'll put this item back on the agenda for our January meeting. Excellent. Just as a curiosity, Sarah, the comments are, are they usually intensive, or is it, you know, one or two, or it just depends?
I think it's just gonna depend. I don't anticipate large comments, because it has really kind of stuck with the model ordinance, but, yeah, we won't necessarily...
No worries, no worries. Well, thank you. All right, so we will then move to Item Number 2, Fees in lieu. And everybody received the memo from the Town Planner regarding fees of lieu, fees in lieu, and mitigation fees in the critical area regulations. Everybody received that? And did everyone have an opportunity to look it over? Okay. We will open it. Does anybody have any questions, comments? And we can start with, on my right, to Commissioner Blackwelder.
My only question is, I see the fees in lieu here on page 2, and then I see some different fees and loues on page 3, and so I'm assuming that means that in the critical area, typically fees and lieu are higher?
So the, the fees in lieu here that we were discussing are for the critical, these fees in lieu are for the critical area, the memo.
Okay.
So, so on page 2, you have a comparison of critical area ordinances for other towns and cities in state, and then on page 3, you actually have the Calvert Counties fee in lieu for critical area mitigation. And then the last piece is some outside research that I did into like the actual costs. We discussed finding kind of actual costs of reforestation. So that's why there's three different charts. One is, what's everyone else doing, the ones, what's your county doing, and one is, what is an estimate of actual cost.
So, what everyone else is doing, that's the last table, is that...
That's the first table. Everyone else is pretty much at 150, except for the city of Annapolis, where 150 is the minimum.
Now, I'm sorry...
Sorry?
The, um, but I, I think, there is no breakdown, as the current rates for fee in lieu, above the 125 for private development, and 250 for the public sector development.
Oh, right.
Down below, they, that isn't broken down by private and public, right? So what, are we assuming what this fee would pertain to?
So, I think, the, my understanding was, kind of wanted to talk overall about how to potentially restructure or recharge that fee in lieu, and do it in a way that's more in line with what it actually costs to mitigate. And so I don't, basically, all the other places were the same for their public and their private developments. So I would say, unless there is a reason to charge more for the public sector development projects, that you might want to just get to a place where the cost is the same for all. But I do think, even though most towns still have 150, if you look at what the county is doing, and what it actually costs to reforest, the, the rates that you're charging are, do need to be increased.
Were you, were you gonna ask the state the number that would be kind of the maximum getaway with?
Right, and I haven't gotten that information back either, but yes. Clearly, the county is getting away with, not getting away with, but like, some numbers that are much closer to this estimated number of what it actually costs. So I think the number of what it actually costs is, is pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Within that, yeah.
Because it seems very silly to have a fee in lieu that doesn't cover the actual cost.
Right.
Yeah.
I also kind of like, and I don't know how you guys feel about this, but the, the way that the county has it laid out, so that the more you're clearing, the higher your fee is. And I think that that is really useful to push, you know, for less clearing. So with the county, the percentage of the, the site that you're clearing actually changes your fee. So if it's less, so, less than 20%, it's only $2 per square foot, but then when you get over 30, it's 750 per square foot. So that might be something to consider, rather than public versus private development, how much is actually being cleared.
And could we start, then, like even the smallest amount, at least covering our, you know, does that seem something that the state would potentially be amenable to, to start at the 405?
Right.
And then to go up from there?
Yes, I think that would be reasonable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So the numbers on page 2, these aren't Anarondle County or Calvert County?
On page, on the first page or on the second page?
Page 2.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, yes, page 2 is not county. It's only the, the comparison of towns. Page 3 has the county. I'm sorry, I, I got my page numbers mixed.
So page, page 3, what, what are the numbers, 126 through 130 in the left-hand column?
I just, I, I could've, should've probably cropped those off. They're just referring back to the code in the county, their county code references. It's like a chart that they have.
Okay, and so this is a, a critical area mitigation for clearing? What is, what does that mean?
Not clearing, but activities in the buffer, right? When you're doing, when you're removing and you're not mitigating on-site, or you're not mitigating a stormwater on-site, then that's when you're paying per square foot of area that's impacted.
Oh, I'm, I'm just trying to understand clearing. I mean, it appears in almost all of these, so what is, as a builder, what would I think of as clearing?
Removing vegetation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right, so, so just, just the whole, the whole subject of these fees and loas, as I think you pointed out in your second paragraph, we haven't really done it here in Chesapeake Beach. Why, why, that, and this is only if the builder chooses not, not to do what you, what the Planning Commission requires them to do?
Well, the Planning Commission would have to approve the builder not doing what's required, right?
Well, the, the builder submits a site plan, and he's clearing, he's building a building that takes up whatever percent of the project, including his parking lot. And, and, I mean, we have in our zoning code things that they have to do, and he's agreed to do all those things. This is in addition to that?
No, so fee and lieu...
Only if he refuses to do the things that we, we require him to do in the zoning code.
If he refused to do the things, then you probably wouldn't approve the permit, right?
That's my point.
Right, so...
Okay, so I'm, I'm just wondering why we're, we're trying, trying to guess what it's gonna cost 10 years from now, or five years from now, because these things don't change very often, as opposed to, just recognizing, he's not gonna get a site plan approved, and if he deviates from the site plan, then we're gonna go to that other section of code that you passed out today, about thousands of dollars fine and all of that. So I'm, I'm not sure why, why or how we implement this fee in lieu. First, why, but, I mean, we have to set up a whole new accounting system or something for somebody to, to manage, and I'm not sure, I don't see the necessity of that.
Right, so the fee in lieu is in, it's already in the ordinance for 150. And so the reason to maintain a fee in lieu in the ordinance is if you have a situation where you, as the Planning Commission, and the person submitting the plan, really do say, wow, there really is no reasonable solution here on this site for all of the mitigation, and so we're gonna require you to do the maximum possible, and then you're gonna pay this fee in lieu for the part that you actually can't do. Even though that hasn't happened in 10 years, putting yourself in a place where you can't charge, that could be a factor. And then the other reason, I just wanna say, is if somebody goes ahead and does something without your permission, right? And then they're getting all those fines, but they also still need to mitigate if they're sort of a single-family house, and they don't actually have the space to fully mitigate on their site, you want to be able to, you wanna be able to make sure that you are making it expensive enough that people aren't gonna say, I'm just gonna do this thing and then pay the fine later. You want people to say, no, I'm gonna follow the rules and not clear out this area, so...
Even, even $10 a square foot, whatever number we come up with, but something onerous is what you're suggesting, so that, so, well, we wanna be able to impose something that they would get their attention. That's not a lot of money.
I guess it depends.
I mean, if, you know, you have a, a 6,000-square-foot piece of property, and you're supposed to mitigate 25% of it or something, what's a reasonable number, 50%? I don't know. So, so you end up with 3,000 times 10, that's $30,000 at the price of property in Chesapeake Beach. That's not very, that's, that's, that's enough for a developer to pay. I can pay that.
So just, I was just gonna say, I think this is a discussion that, that the Planning Board should have.
Well, that's, that's why, why we're answering the questions. And that, I think that's why Commissioner Greenold brought it up, is because if it's not really onerous, why, why initiate a new pro, why, why don't we just rely upon, the site plan isn't gonna be approved, or some provision maybe, where you say your site plan can be withdrawn? Approval can be withdrawn if it doesn't meet the other zoning code, rather than entering into some new management program here.
Right, so I guess two, two reasons I think this should stay in here, and, and why, is we don't know if there's a situation that could be a taking if there's not another way to mitigate, right, of property, so it's, it's good to have it in here. Like a taking of property, so if you...
Taking under the law means that the, if you, if, if, for example, we talked about this in, during the comprehensive plan, if, or zoning, if we said that you, there is nothing you can do on your property, if we made the zoning such that they couldn't do anything, that would essentially be a taking, because under the law, under the Constitution, where government can take your property, but he has to pay you for it.
Right. So I don't know if there are circumstances that could result in not having another option, being a taking, and I don't, so I, I think it's good to have it in here, it's already in here, I think it's good to keep it in here, but the other, there was another question in there, and it was, the other question was, oh, is it, are we trying to make this onerous? And we're trying to make it equal to the town's cost, not necessarily onerous, but equal to the town's cost, and something that like, isn't just easy to do, so you wouldn't bother to mitigate. But I, I noticed that other people on the Planning Commission have comments, and I think it's something that you all should be discussing, not necessarily me, just kind of...
Well, when, when you say equal to the town's costs, the town isn't gonna go in and mitigate on private property, I don't think.
Right, they would mitigate on public property, but that would...
They can mitigate someplace else, I guess, but...
Yes.
But how, how do you, give me an example of how, if Rodden Reel built something that was, that required mitigation on their piece of property over here, how would, I mean, if, they added more parking lot to it or something, so impervious surfaces...
I believe...
That exceeded, and they were approved by the Planning Commission, but now we're gonna mitigate that impervious surface.
After the fact?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're talking about. The town comes after the fact mitigating something, is, isn't that what you're saying?
Well, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so my understanding that, that Rodden Reel actually did, you know, not get a fee in lieu, and they, they did put in a system that allowed them to mitigate the impacts of their development on-site, and that's an example of how the town and the Planning Board works to make sure that the mitigation is happening on-site, rather than elsewhere. So it's kind of, I'm gonna use a smaller example, so say I have my house in Chesapeake Beach, and I wanna put on an addition, because, you know, I've had more kids and they need more space, so I, I wanna bump out the house and get myself more space. Well, say my lot is very tiny, and I have to clear some trees, and there's no way to plant more trees, you know, it's, it's more in this smaller, the larger developers, you're gonna require them to really do that mitigation on-site, and they're gonna have the space to do it. That's what the town has historically done. But if you're a small, you know, single-family homeowner, because some of the lots are very small or very tight, you could run into a situation where someone's kind of ability to expand their property is needed, or use their property could be hindered if they don't have a fee in lieu option. And the fee in lieu option is, you can't mitigate for stormwater inside, on-site, so I have no room to plant additional trees to mitigate this stormwater, so I'm gonna pay the town money to go plant those additional trees elsewhere within this area.
I have a question.
Well, Commissioner Blackwelder, let's...
That's, that's all my question.
Well, yeah, I wasn't finished with my question from Larry. I'll, I'll wait.
Larry's finished, Commissioner Brown's finished, so back to you.
Didn't we preserve the option on this Planning Board to say, you are not doing enough mitigation on-site, therefore we do not approve, or did we not preserve that option for ourselves?
Right, so you, you do get to determine whether they're allowed to use fee in lieu.
Right.
Right.
So now I'm not understanding the taking example that you gave, because if we did say that, if, if somebody said, which will probably happen, I want to clear a big area on Cox Road and build twice as big as I should, and therefore I will need a parking lot that's twice as big as I need it to be, or as, you know, as mitigation allows, and then we say, no, this area is, it's forested, the, the trees are of value to the area and to the neighborhood, and this, that, and the other, and plus they're good for stormwater management, and you are not mitigating enough on-site, therefore we don't approve your site plan.
Correct.
Would that be valid?
Yes.
Okay, and so, but we might say, you need to mitigate more than you are proposing, go back and find a different plan, maybe you aren't able to do, I don't know, 10,000 square feet of this mitigation, for that you can pay a fee in lieu. Is that kind of what this is? Like, can we say no?
Yeah, the fee, you have, you have to say yes to fee in lieu, right?
You have to say yes. So if they say, we're not gonna mitigate, I don't want to...
Then you say no. You're going to mitigate.
Right.
Yes, so it's...
What do we have to say yes to?
Yeah. You do not have to say yes to fee in lieu. It's an option that you may choose to use in specific situations, which have not arisen in this town in known, the known past, but are not impossible to ever arise. So you should have a plan for, if you need it, but it's not a plan that's used, you know, just, just 'cause you don't use it doesn't mean you don't wanna have that plan there.
Right, and I, and I tend to agree with you when you put it like that, when we still are preserving our opportunity to say, no, you're clear-cutting this whole parcel, that's not appropriate, you are therefore not approved, if we still have that ability, I have no problem with having this ability as well.
Yeah, if we go back to the critical area draft that we, we drafted, you have to really prove that you absolutely cannot reasonably mitigate on-site before fee in lieu is even triggered.
So what if they can prove that they can't mitigate on-site, and it's because they have...
It gives you a lot of interpretive leeway on that, so...
We still have the ability, what would we use, the Health and Welfare Clause, or what, what would we, because this is what happens when we're doing site plans, you have a developer in front of you, they have a million pieces of paper, they've done all this work, there, there's a, there's a, a stress involved in, in trying to do right by both the town and the developer at the same time, and, you know, in the past, those situations are kind of pressure-cooked, on top of having their... their natural pressure.
Um, I mean, I feel like that's part of what I, I'm, I'm here to look at ahead of time and say, you know, more needs to be done onsite and, you know, please send it back to your engineers.
Right, and your, and your assistance in that area is-
Right.
Going to be key to the success of development in our town.
Right, and I think that, that the previous planner was performing that role and it's, it's just, you know, you have a, you have, um, a history of holding a very high standard for onsite mitigation. So no one can go back and say, oh, you just always let everyone pay their fee in lieu and so I should be able to too. You have a history of saying, no, we require, we, we really require you to do this onsite. So if you want to pay a fee in lieu, you're going to have to show us beyond all doubt that there is absolutely no way you can mitigate onsite reasonably.
But you would, as our planner, you would feel more comfortable if we had this in place and if the fee was commensurate with how much it would cost the town?
Yes.
That makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. Yes, they'll request it of you, but you have to approve, sorry, I don't know what it's making, uh, you'll have to approve them using fee in lieu. I, I'm, I'm sure the attorney gets involved somewhere in there, but, um, yeah.
Commissioner Blackwelder, you have more questions?
Uh, no, I, I want, you know, in a perfect world, the planner and the commission have all the tools that they need at their disposal to make sure that a town develops, um, responsibly. And I will add that somebody mentioned an attorney, that a planning and zoning attorney is one of those things, but that's a different discussion. I, I support the recommendations that Sarah has given us.
Sarah, my, just so I am correct in the, in my thinking, so for the fee in lieu, when I have, uh, I certainly understand the, what you're talking about, the impact of a larger property and throwing down 30,000 for a developer than a private citizen who that fee would be, you know, prohibitive. I guess my question is, um, that when the site plan is approved, the idea is that what we're talking about, um, I think the, absolutely that the fee in lieu should be, it is on the books and it should remain on the books, just so, you know, you can't all of a sudden affect the policy that you don't have. And so I appreciate that, but I guess what I'm thinking is if the site plan has been, okay, my site plan has been approved, but then I realize, eh, I don't really want to do that. I, I want to build that addition, I want to go a little bit larger and I don't really have, uh, such a care about the trees on the property. So is this the situation that we, that kicks in the fee in lieu program that, because obviously if I said that before when I'm doing my site plan, we're going to say, hold the bus, no, we're not approving the site plan. So it's after the fact that the site plan has been approved that the individual, is, is that the circumstances that then we find that people try to do the mitigation?
I'm going to say yes and no. So first of all, if they build something that's outside of the site plan and the approved permit, that they really have to take it back down, right? But if they already took those trees down, they are going to have fines. But if they, the mitigation in the new critical area ordinance that we just sent over is a two to one, so if they took the trees down and they put in the wrong, you know, something that wasn't approved and they have to back that out, they're going to pay fines for the trees, but they're also going to have to mitigate for the trees. And if with the new ordinance and the two to one mitigation, depending on the size of the lot, they might not fully be able to mitigate on the lot, like-
So when you're using the term mitigate, you, you mean they also are going to pay for that as well?
If they, if you, if you all approved a site plan and then they go and do something else, they're, yes, they're going to have to pay a fine, or if they go do something without a site plan. What if they just decided to clear their, their, their trees without approval in the critical area? Then you're going to have fines and they're going to need to mitigate, but especially with the higher levels of mitigation in the new critical area ordinance, you, you may actually run into more of those situations where they can't fully mitigate onsite.
So you're using the word mitigation to me reparation. So if I, if I took down the trees and I absolutely was not, I, that wasn't approved and now I'm going to pay a fine because I took down those trees, but I'm also going to have to, when you're saying mitigate, I'm going to have to replenish or-
Well, if you asked to take down the trees, so if you asked to take down the trees first, you would have to plant the trees back, that's the mitigation. So the mitigation is, is a, is a request, it's not something that happens after the fact, but the fee in lieu piece of it, right, could wind up getting triggered more for after the fact, right? When someone's already done something and, and they're getting all those fines, but they, if you take down five trees in your backyard and you weren't allowed to, you're going to be fined for that, but you also have to plant five trees in addition to those fines. Now, in the new critical area ordinance, you're going to have to plant 10 trees in addition to those fines. And if your backyard isn't big enough to plant those 10 trees, then what other mitigation do we, you know, do we talk about? But is there a point at which you, you are going to have to allow fee in lieu for these smaller projects? And, and hopefully no one does after the fact, right? Because, because people should not be just taking their trees down, but if they do, you want to be able to make sure that mitigation can happen offsite if it can't happen onsite. So.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Weaver? Any questions?
No further questions.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes. So I've never received a site plan before, so their mitigation proposals or requirements will be in that plan. And then they're going to scurry around with an engineer, do something else and discover that perhaps they either don't want to or don't think they can, and after the fact they come back to us and say, we can't do this?
No, so the, the original site plan is everything that they planned to do, they've done all of the planning and it's absolutely what they can do. So they have an engineer-
Right, right.
And all of that. So, um, there's, there's two ways, kind of the permits, there's, the permits get issued because whenever you're doing something in town, you should come into the town hall and request a permit. Not everyone does that, certainly, you know, some people are, like, I can just do this and they don't realize that they need to get a permit. Because of the impacts of being in the critical area and the impacts on your neighbors and in the overall flooding and stormwater impacts of making that decision to take vegetation out, we need to make sure that if you do take vegetation out, it goes back in, um, because otherwise your neighbors are having more flooding in their yard. And so that's why this is in here and that's why it makes sense for small lots, right? For the mitigation to come back to the town because what the town can do is it can plant those trees on town property or in town rights of way, close to where it should have been mitigated. That's one, there's lots of ways the town can mitigate, but that's one way to help mitigate on that micro level. So no one's, no one who comes in with a site plan, a category one site plan, should be making any changes or just doing whatever they want later.
But what they propose-
Is what they do.
Is what's, what we've dictated to them, they have to do, given your chart.
Right, so they will propose what they want to do and then we will review it and determine if it meets all the requirements and we may ask them to do more-
Okay.
To meet the requirements.
Any further questions?
No, I, I, I guess not. I'm, I'm not a big fee in lieu of fan, I, I, at all. And I, I, with your explanation, I guess it, it sounds like it would be the very rare case. Is that, I mean, we haven't had one in 10 years, correct?
Yeah, no, no one here remembers ever having one and has not been able to find anything in any files showing any use of fee in lieu. So I, I think you could potentially bump into it on, like, single family houses in the IDA, um, after the new resolution is passed, but I, I don't think it's something that you use, it's just something you have in your back pocket if you need it.
Okay.
One more question.
Commissioner Brown, pardon me. Commissioner Reddick, any further questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, on your page three in the, uh, chart there of critical area mitigation fees in Calvert County, um, the one to one, two to one, one and a half to one, three to one for different areas in the critical area, what's the justification for that, if you know?
I don't, I don't know their justification, I just have the chart.
I mean, it sounds, it reads to me on the surface that, uh, they're trying, Calvert County is trying to make it more onerous in different areas of the critical area than in others, has nothing to do with the costs that it's going to impose on the county. It's, uh, I mean, one to one, one and a half to one, two to one, three to one, um, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, you know, their, their thinking on this, but I do know that, you know, that buffer is, is absolutely critical to everyone's, you know, safety. And so I think making it more onerous to clear more from the buffer is, they're trying to incentivize maintaining that buffer.
It's not, I, it's not necessarily more expensive to mitigate it in the buffer or in the IDA or LDA or any of the other areas.
Correct.
The cost is about the same roughly, I mean, it might, might be a little more here and there.
Yeah, they're trying to incentivize onsite.
Yeah, and so they're in Calvert County, they're trying to grade it by the area they're most interested in.
The impacts, the cost of mitigating the impacts might be more expensive in the buffer. And so that's a cost that the town would incur.
Commissioner Blackwelder to give me an example.
Commissioner Blackwelder?
An example of where it might be more costly-
Yeah.
Well, maybe you need a stronger pump to pump out, uh, stormwater that's running off in the buffer that is flooding a road, maybe you, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
Well, you, you made an assertion, I'm just wondering what it's based on.
Okay, well, it's based on things like that. It's clearly-
I've, I've got it, thank you.
Any other questions? So, um, so Sarah, obviously we've talked about that the plan already exists and now the, I think the, the question is if we are going to make a modification to the fee in lieu program, um, and specifically I think where that's focused on is increasing the fines. So, um, in, in regards to that, um, we have on the agenda that we're, we're going to look at fees in lieu with 290 dash 30, the zoning code. So is your recommendation at this point for us to, to actually, um, if we, if we vote to, you know, to change the fees, um, we would just make that decision now based on what you offered or you're going to have a recommendation, um, for that, what that cost should be? And then afterwards we will look at in comparison to the zoning code.
So there's a distinction between the fee in lieu and the fines, they're separate. So sec, the section that you have, um, on the agenda under fee in lieu is actually fines and penalties. So in the critical area ordinance, that was sent over, uh, to the critical area commission for them to review, there is a section on fee in lieu and I want to say that we left it at 150, um, and planned to change it based on what it would actually cost. So it's really what is the, what is the price of, of a fee in lieu of mitigation onsite? And then the fines and penalties are, are separate. Right, I would say you could do 425 if you want, like, you can round that up a little. Yeah. I would say you should at least get up to 405, um, because that's only really mitigating with, um, planting. So if you have to mitigate, if you're in an area that is, um, highly developed and you have to mitigate with things like pumping or changes, structural changes, then, you know, it's more expensive. As Commissioner, that's what Commissioner Blackwelder was talking about earlier, if you clear in that buffer area, it's more expensive for the town to perform mitigation because they can't necessarily plant there. They might have to change their stormwater infrastructure.
Well, Commissioner Blackwelder, um, stated that-
Yes.
But, um, I, I don't know for Commissioner Brown's satisfaction that we determined that, that is actually fact and not just-
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess I'm thinking, when you're mitigating, right, when, when you are clearing an area, it is better to do the mitigation as close to the area that the impact is happening as possible. So if, if we cut down trees, um, on C Street, we don't want to plant them over in Richfield Station, or, I mean, I, you can, but that-
Correct.
Doesn't actually help the area where the trees are from.
Certainly.
I think that, that's why, so the town may need to do mitigation, um, in a structural way instead, instead of a non-structural way, depending on where the project is.
Well, don't, don't, don't we clarify, for example, if, location, so if I, if I've taken down the trees and, at site A, I have to mitigate on site A?
Right.
Isn't that in the current?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for if you can't mitigate on site A, that's when you pay a fee, but you have to prove to the planning commission first that you can't mitigate on that site. Um, and so structural versus non-structural is, um, if I'm going to plant trees versus I'm going to put in, um, some sort of stormwater, storm drain.
Just to, as a point, who determines that there's been a violation of fee in lieu, that, that mitigation is necessary? Do we, I know with all building, there's a, there's an inspection, is, would they determine that on doing a structural inspection of a site like my single family home, building my house up on B Street? Who would determine that? Kathleen is taking down trees. How is the violation come to the attention?
So the violation again is separate from the fee in lieu.
Okay, but the fee in, okay.
Right. So I don't, I don't know that I've quite been here long enough to fully know who on staff notices violations or who goes out looking for violations. But staff does become aware of violations in various ways. Like.
Sounds so nefarious.
Right. I'm, I'm thinking of violations of like, hey, this person put on a deck and they didn't have a permit, right? That's, that's different from fee in lieu. But there's a variety of ways that staff becomes aware of things that have happened. Fee in lieu is not really related to that. It impacts that, but it's not related to someone did something they weren't supposed to.
So you're saying that the way you find out there's been a violation is not based on fee in lieu. It's based on mitigation.
No, fee in lieu is, is.
Fee in lieu is mitigation.
Yeah, I'm going to try, I'm going to try to start over. So mitigation is, I have a site plan. I have, I have 10 acres of land in Chesapeake Beach and it's completely forested. And I want, it's in the resource conservation area and I want to build on it. And I'm allowed to put, I think I'm allowed to put like a nature center in there, right? But if I do, I'm going to have to mitigate for the trees that I removed to put in my nature center and the impervious surface of the nature center and the, the driving pathways. If there is absolutely no way I can mitigate onsite, which is extremely unlikely, right? If I have this big area, then I can pay a fee to have the mitigation elsewhere. Yeah.
But that's only, that's only if we decide we want to let them pay the fee in lieu. The fee in lieu only happens if we decide that that is an acceptable solution.
Larry Shaken has said no.
There's one, one other situation.
Uh, building permits come to this commission. Oh, you could have the example you gave, small lot, small home, that would be approved by you without coming to the commission. And it could include a requirement for mitigation, right? So not everything comes here.
Right. If it's built, I thought.
In fact, very few things come here.
If we're, if I, my understanding, like for the re-institution of the port warden program that when you're building along the water, we don't, we don't approve that. There hasn't been an approval for that.
So I, I, I'm not sure if you're talking about two different things. So if you're talking about a lot, you know, just an individual lot and they are putting in a driveway or they're building a deck, then that's coming in through town, through staff. I'm looking at it. I'm saying there's this much increase in impervious surface area and this is the required mitigation on that site. So far, no one has been unable to mitigate onsite. And for the most part, if you're unable to mitigate onsite on your individual lot, then the answer is really no, you can't do that thing because you're like, your lot is too small. But when you increase, we're increasing the mitigation requirement. Right now, if you take out one tree, you have to plant one tree. If, once the new critical area regulation goes in, you have to put, plant two trees. And that could become more, more of a problem on this much smaller lots that are closer to the shoreline. If they're taking out a tree to, you know, just why would they be taking?
They don't like it.
They don't like it. The dead ones are a different story. Yeah, they need to expand their driveway. A lot of times it's, it's just not allowed. Like there's just a lot of things that aren't allowed in those smaller areas. But with the increased mitigation requirement, I really think it's probably good to have this here. But you're right. So staff would be approving the smaller ones. And then the other situation that I think it would be relevant is if someone is, someone has created a violation, right? This is separate from the fee in lieu program, but someone has violated the critical area ordinance by taking down more than they should have. And they're going to be subject to all these fines. But even after they're subject to the fines, they actually have to mitigate. If they had asked for permission first, they would have been required to mitigate. So even though they didn't ask for permission, they still have to mitigate. And because they didn't ask for permission, if you guys find that they can't mitigate on the site, then you still want them to mitigate, right? You can have them, say they, they cleared a bunch of trees to put in more driveway. Well, you can have them tear up that driveway. But you can't have them put back the trees unless they have the space to put back the trees. And if you can only have them put back one for one, and there's not enough space for them to put back two for one, then that's where your fee in lieu is going to come in, even though no one said it was okay to do it. You may still want that used.
So there wouldn't be, in that scenario, and I realize we're getting scenario driven. In that scenario, okay, they can't, they can't mitigate. They, there's, they can't plant more trees. Would we ever have a, a location that you can plant trees? Just not, but it isn't in necessarily proximity to where the mitigation occurred?
Right. I mean.
Like kind of like a, I don't know, unscheduled or a scheduled area where we could always use more trees in this area. So even though there's no room on the, in proximity to where the the removal of the trees took place, now you're going to, the rest of the trees that you couldn't plant on the property can now be planted in area B.
And that's what the fee does. So they don't buy the trees themselves. They, if, if they, say they took down five trees and putting 10 trees means 10 dead trees in two years, right? So we'd say, okay, it's six trees and here's the amount of money that you have to pay for the town in the town's fee in lieu program. And then the town can use that money to plant trees. And where they plant those trees.
Is determined by the town.
Yes.
No, I'm not saying we shouldn't have something in there. I'm not saying that at all. I want to know who has the final authority to say, you screwed up. We don't want you to have fee in lieu of. And you can't build what you want to build. I mean, do we, who has, do we have that ability? Or must we offer fee in lieu in your scenario?
So whether so that, that usually the after the fact stuff is the smaller category two site plan stuff. So that's coming through staff. And it's staff that kind of makes that determination, but no one's, no one. Yes, I haven't given anyone fee in lieu. And no, no one's been getting fee of lieu on this level either. Yeah.
Automatic.
Yeah, it's not automatic. Theoretically. So because of, of the town's policy not to use fee in lieu, right? Anything that is asking, I don't know if I should be saying, anything that comes forward is going to have to be mitigating onsite, right? If there is no fee in lieu and if you don't have the program and someone's driving around and notices that someone took out three trees in their front yard. They needed a permit for it. They're going to come in for an after the fact permit. And I was smiling because there are a lot of after the fact permits that come in. So.
There's a lot of after the fact.
It means I already built a deck and I didn't know I needed a permit. So now I would like a permit for the deck that I built. Oh, yes. And we do. The, the situation with that though, is if they took out five trees to put in the deck, I, I can make them plant those five trees back, but I might not be able to make them plant 10 trees because they might not have space.
I, I think I can help you out.
Okay.
I think what she's saying is if they can only plant five trees, but the code requires them to plant 10 trees, they have to plant five trees and pay for five trees. Well, the.
No, they don't.
In this situation, we're not giving them that option. They've already done it. They took out five trees. They're fined for the five trees. Now they have to plant the five trees back. But the requirement is that if you take out five trees, you pay up two to one. But maybe their lot doesn't fit 10 trees. So they have to replace their five trees. And then they have to pay for what the mitigation requirement is, the balance. So they have to pay for the five extra trees.
And then the town, they pay the town and then the town will determine where there's five trees.
Yeah, they still have no deck. Or, well, they got punished fines. The fee in lieu is separate. Because if you don't have the fee in lieu, and we're not going to have them plant 10 on the property if the 10 are going to die. So what it is, is, is the town, with the new critical area regulations, is the town putting itself in a, a spot where if someone comes in after the fact, they're only requiring, they're only required to mitigate one to one instead of ahead of time, two to one, which incentivizes, right? You don't want to do that. And then it could, because they wouldn't have to pay at all, right? If you don't have a fee in lieu program, they don't have to pay. So, yeah. There is a level, you're right, there is a level of it that may become automatic. But I think the, the town's, you know, precedent makes that a very high threshold before you can get there.
So you're saying legally, our precedent is to mitigate onsite, to require it. We are retaining the ability and the authority to say, you have to mitigate when we receive a site plan or when you receive a site plan, correct?
Saying nothing legally.
Because we have a town, we don't have an attorney here, which we should.
I'm just saying that. I, I'm just saying that for the town to suddenly start just letting everyone do fee in lieu would be a major change.
Right.
And I'm not getting the sense that the planning commission is directing that change. So there's no, if I was going to approve a permit with a fee in lieu, I would really have to make sure that there was absolutely no other way around it. Because if, you know, I said to y'all, well, we had to use fee in lieu, you're going to want me to demonstrate to you that it was absolutely necessary. So. Oh, that would have to, that, yeah, that wouldn't be through me. That would have to be through landscape engineer or, yeah. Yes. It would have to be an expert in something other than planning to determine whether the trees are, yes.
I have a question about how this could be written into code potentially. Is there a way to say, this is the fee in lieu, but in order for fee in lieu to be used, it has to come before planning and zoning? So if we want to say, we want to have that authority, it hasn't been used. But if you find an exception that this feels like this is interesting or this is a proposition, do we want that to get kicked to us? And is there a way to put that? Yeah. And because that seems to be like where the, the nerves are, that like, we want to be able to have that authority. Can that be written that way?
For category two.
Or for category two.
Site plans where fee in lieu is determined to be required by staff, those plans have to come before the planning board.
And that would, you know.
For category two.
It always would have with a category one, but if a category two, which seems like the time that we would potentially want it. Like I think about some of the houses like back in our neighborhood that barely have any yard. And if you were like, I want a parking spot, there's only street par, I don't know, something weird. That that like, those are the little homeowners that we might want to grant it to and to figure something out. But that if we want that authority to come back here. Possible.
Right. I, I know in, in that scenario, that's exactly what happened. One of our neighbors who's right down the street from you, he has no parking. So he reached out to the town planner and said, I, I really want to be able to park here and not walk seven blocks to my house every night. And, and then they looked at the site plan and said, truly, there is no parking. They gave him, they gave him an exception because.
Well, they mitigated it on property though, right? But it would be the scenario if they couldn't have done that. And if staff was looking at that, but if we want to make sure to have that fail stop, like right now, Sarah's on board with us and we seem to, but that position could change. And if we just want to make sure that that in the future is not a problem if somebody else is there.
It should be.
And that it should be codified.
Right.
To say, fee in lieu's come back to us. Or one, two, yeah.
Yeah. Category one always goes to, we can, I will look at whether that goes in the, I think it probably can go in the critical area ordinance, that if in order for fee in lieu, even for category two site plans, that it has to be recommended by staff to the planning commission for approval. So just. So if, if, if staff is going to use a fee in lieu on a category two site plan, that has to be a recommendation that comes before the planning commission for you all to approve. You can always choose not to, but I believe that in the situations where the category two site plan comes to you, that you would probably choose to rather than not to. Mainly for after the fact, like after the facts, you're, I think you want it there to, to, to cover the after the facts. And, and those fee in lieu's will still have to come up to you with this language that you recommended, Commissioner Weaver. So I, I think you want it there. That's what I'm just, based on everyone's desire to make sure that the town is more resilient and, you know, everything's being managed. I really think that you want this tool in your toolbox.
So I think I understand what you're saying with your example. We would not want to create a precedent where somebody violated, asked for an after the fact permit, but yet we. but yet we decided to be nice and not charge the fee and low. So maybe while you're writing the first suggestion, we could also codify that it would always be charged in after the fact situations.
Where onsite mitigation isn't possible?
Yes, where, yes. That way, we're not in a situation where somebody's asking them, you know, asking us to relieve them of a financial burden.
Commissioner Brown.
Why, why, the number is arbitrary, I think. A dollar fifty, two fifty, seven, whatever. It's, it's, why not just, why don't we, why isn't the fee and lieu the cost of, the actual cost of mitigating it? Why wouldn't the, the person proposing whatever the issue is have to present a plan for mitigating? And what it would, and present a plan for paying for it? And keep us, the town, not us, but to keep the town out of the business of trying to manage another fee and lieu fund? And then, and then expending it and putting it and accounting for it and all of that. Why not just have the individual who's proposing mitigation have to present a cost of what it's going to impact? And, and then whoever we decide, whoever the, whoever the town council decides would adjudicate that or approve it. And then you're dealing with the actual cost rather than this arbitrary number.
That sounds way more complicated.
So, well, so there's two things. The town is taking in money for fee and lieu, it's going to have to set up that financial program.
Not if, not if, you keep using trees, I think it's more than trees.
It is more than trees, yes.
But just sticking with trees, you have to plant five more trees. We'll get Kelly's Tree Service, give you an estimate of what it's going to cost to plant them in this whatever location the town approves it to go in. And, and then the town is out of the, out of the business. They pay Kelly's Tree Service to do, do the mitigation. Or you have to, you have to add a new sewer system under the, under the road. Well, then, then you would ask the, the town engineer what, what that would cost and get an estimate. And then they would have to pay the, the town the cost. But a sewer system is going to be a lot more than seven fifty a square foot, whatever we're talking about. So why, why, why not put the burden on the, which I really hate, but put the burden on the, the proposal, proposer of this mitig, the person doing the act that requires mitigation to come up with a mitigation plan and pay for it.
Well, just my comments.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Brown, is that if I'm going to be responsible for what the fee might be or what it's going to cost me, then I certainly would see, get an estimate that low ball that. I mean, you know.
It still has to be approved.
Right.
Still would have to be, they would then come with that, that plan, the costs and, and whoever it is.
Right.
Town planner or the commission would have to approve it.
Right, but then like in most government workings, it's a matter of three quotes. And then you, you choose the best of the three quotes. And then we, you know, we run into that. Whereas if we have a, a structure, a financial structure established, then it's, it's already established. And then we, to my mind, then we avoid all this further three quotes and which one's the best. Because I, I think anybody who would be responsible on, on my property, if I have to, you know, get trees, I'm going to, I'm going to find my buddy Fred, who Fred always works with me and they're going to give me, you know, 50 trees for this amount of money. So, I mean, why would I want to pay more? I think it, it opens Pandora's box as far as making, instituting the, the financial aspect of that.
Yeah, I don't see what's hard about maintaining an account versus having all these bids. Like me maintaining an account is much easier and much more straightforward.
They will cover the most likely scenarios, yes.
And you and we retain the ability to say no if we want to require mitigation as a condition for site plan approval.
Right, and you, you have historically said no, mitigate onsite. And people have figured it out, so.
But the way it's being presented, to me, there is not a losing scenario in this. It's a matter of determining the fair price.
And on that point, I'll go back to the city of Annapolis, which has a, a low number. It's, or even you could say it's a minimum of $4. And the planning commission. So in the city of Annapolis, it's a minimum of 150.
Minimum.
But the fee is actually determined specifically by the city council on a case by case basis. So you could say it's $4 or whatever, but that's the low and it has to be determined. I don't know legally if it would be you or if it would be the city. It might have to be the, the actual town council that would determine it. But they couldn't go. Right, so that gets to this, you know, if you're in the buffer and there's lots of paved area and there's little area to plant, then you are mitigating in a more expensive structural way. And so that amount could be more.
But it still would come to the planning and zoning that we would then make the recommendation if town council was going to approve that. But we would have you, or somebody similar to you.
Right.
That was, right. And I, and I think the, the point was made earlier. And I think it's important that it's in the policy. So we're not relying on your, it should be objective. It shouldn't be arbitrary or capricious that.
Right.
You know, you leave as the scenario that Commissioner Rutke gave. And now we have, you know, someone who is a tree delit and hates them. And, you know, and now we're, we're.
That's a wantsler in here.
Right, so like file them all down, you know. So it should be protected and, and we should be going off a policy. Not, you know, your perspective, my perspective.
So, yeah, if you recommend to me, I've got the category two site plan. If we do a price, if we do a threshold, and I'll draft that up to go with the comments from the state for next time. I just want to make sure I have clear direction.
That, that sounds excellent to me. Okay. Any, any further comment? Question?
If we want to add that language that it comes back to us, where do we do, like, at what point would that happen? When it comes back from the state that then we put in, that in?
Well, I think what Sarah's asking for is that we make a motion directing her. You had the suggestion of the language, so you would make a motion for your language. I guess I had a suggestion for language too, so. And then she's also looking for us to make a motion for the way in which we want to price our fee and lieu program. And if we do that, she will draft it, is what she's saying. So I think, I guess we have three motions to make.
The first one's the language, the second one's the fee and lieu, and the third motion is. The.
I'm trying to remember what.
Recommendation.
Talked about.
The, like, price and then that setting it at a minimum if you wanted to.
So there's four, so the fee and lieu.
Language.
And that would include whether or not we want to include a minimum type of language or if we just want a straight fee and lieu price or how we want to structure it. The second one is Rachel's language that says category two site plans that are considered for fee and lieu must come to the planning commission. What did we discuss right after you said that?
Always be, I wrote, always be charged after the fact when onsite mitigation is not possible.
Yes, my language was that in the case of after the fact permits or violations, a fee and lieu must always be charged. That way, we're not put in the position where we can waive the fee.
It will cover, like planting, it should cover planting. And e- even if the town needs to purchase property for planting, that's all factored in there. But there are possible situations where you might want to charge more. So that's why I, I noted that city of Annapolis situation. And it sounds like something you guys want to consider, so. A minimum, say, say you say a minimum of $4.25 and then that the, a higher amount can be charged.
All right, so Commissioner Weaver, are you going to present the motion for the language for the category two site plan to be sent to planning and zoning?
So.
They're on that ledge.
So I don't really know how I'm supposed to word this. You're an English major, you can do it.
Okay, I would like to present a motion that we include language in our code to say that any site two plan that we, that comes to staff, that you think that fee and lieu might be appropriate, comes before planning and zoning to be approved.
Very well. Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
One point of discussion, Rachel, did you want to use the word shall?
Sure I do.
Okay.
You're easy.
Yeah, definitely meant to say that. Shall come before planning and zoning.
Commissioner Brown.
Oh, what are we changing?
We're adding that language because, oh, that's.
Category two.
A question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay, I mean, just, we, I think we need to know what we're changing or what we're, where we're adding it before we start making changes.
So we're asking Sarah to draft language is what the motion was.
So right now it will go in the critical area ordinance. But ultimately, but that goes into the zoning ordinance. But we should ultimately adjust that portion of the zoning ordinance that refers to category two to just. But for, right now, if it goes in this critical area, it will be the rule. So that's fine.
So we're, you're going to draft language for us to approve at the next meeting?
As part of the overall.
Consider at the next meeting.
Right, so it's, it's the big, it's the critical area ordinance that we're working on. It's making an adjustment to the fee and loose section. That's what all of these motions are referencing, is the critical area ordinance fee and loose section. And I will draft that language and use shall, but wordsmith if needed. And then you guys will approve it.
All in favor? Any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes? All right, the next motion. This is in regards to the fee and lieu, the minimum cost. So anybody want to make the motion? The fee and lieu minimum cost should be, would be reflected as $4.25. I'll make that motion that will change the language so that the, the minimum cost would be for mitigating with planting would be $4.25. That would be reflected in the ordinance. And do I have a second? Question?
I'm comfortable with the recommended number.
Commissioner Brown?
I just have trouble with recommending, so I don't know where it's going. We're, we're suggesting changes. I'd like to see it in context because without the context of the rest of the proposed ordinance, I'm not exactly sure what it says. But you're talking about drafting, not where it comes back to us. So I'll see that as a, when it comes back to us, when we get the comments from the state, we're going to consider this again and it can be reconsidered at that time. So I'll vote against it.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Brown, Sarah's going to present at the next meeting. And I believe also give a reference to where this would actually be impacted if we did it in fact affect it. Is that correct?
Right, so it's, it's in part four, modified buffer area. It is letter X, I think it might be under a number, hang on. Part four, B. Roman numeral eight, X. Fees in lieu of planting. Applicants who cannot comply with the planting or offset requirement shall pay into a fee and lieu program. B fees and loo shall be collected at a rate per square foot for required mitigation that cannot be satisfied through planning offsets. Right now, it says for private development projects, the rate shall be 125 per square foot. For public sector development projects, the rate shall be 250 per square foot. This is, that specific area is where I'm going to make all of the changes that you guys are proposing right now. And I will make sure you can see that I made changes to that area.
Okay, so for Commissioner Brown's sake, at the next meeting, he's going to be able to see the reference where this will be actually impacted and applied.
That'll help me as well.
I can do a whole track changes version again with that in it.
And then we'll have the opportunity, so right now we're just.
Comments from.
Right.
Critical area.
We're just voting on the fact that you will do that and as pertaining to fee and lieu, the minimum cost. So, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next is the third motion. And this talks about the violations, fee and lieu must be charged. Commissioner Blackweller, do you want to offer this motion?
I can offer it.
Must be charged.
Um, yes. I'd like to offer the motion that we direct the town planner to draft language that states that in the case of after the fact permits or violation, the fee and lieu shall always be applied.
Do I have a second? Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
That concludes our, I believe, our discussion and our addressing fees and lieu. So at this point, we will now move to item number three, old business. And. My old business, I mean, I take it to being former. And so we're going to discuss review and approval of the rules of procedure. Everybody's had an opportunity to look at the rules and procedures. Is there any discussion? That we would like to take place? Commissioner Brown?
Oh, I just have a comment. At the last meeting when we were discussing this, we, the question was raised that. We should ask, ask the town or the town council should approve our rules of procedure. And I wanted to explain why I don't believe that's necessary. It addresses really section one, the purpose, and. The, in, in our section of the code for the planning commission. Section A ten says, conduct activities as provided by the land use article of Maryland. Land use article under section two dash one oh five miscellaneous powers and duties, sub paragraph C. Rules and records, one. A planning commission shall, sub paragraph I, adopt rules for the conduct of its business. So, and if you go to the Board of Appeals, who have made a major rewrite of their section of the code. Under their section C, sub paragraph one, it says shall, the Board of Appeals shall prescribe rules in accordance with the provisions. Of the. The land use article annotated Maryland. So I believe we have that authority from the state of Maryland. And we could spell that out in that first paragraph if we wanted to. But the first paragraph here is basically identical to the new code that the Board of Appeals has adopted. So I'm not sure it's necessary. Just, just that comment. And that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comment? On Commissioner Brown?
I have a comment on section nine.
Well, let's, before we move away, can we. Decide. What we are, whether we're going to. Actually follow that without the need for town council approval?
Well, that makes sense to me, too. I mean, we're supposed to follow certain rules, and for the town to. Look at that and think something should be modified in the procedure doesn't make sense to me if it's already established elsewhere with the state. I mean, what are they going to modify?
And I see Larry's point, and the town council can always. Revise the zoning ordinance if there's a problem with. What we decide to do with our business. So I can, I can see Larry's point in what he was saying.
Larry, did you say the Board of Appeals did or did not get approval from the? Town council?
I don't know.
Okay.
But your point was that their rules and procedures don't, they don't go to seek the town council's approval.
Well, they're, they're, the, in the town code for the Board of Appeals, the code says. Let me read that section. Under section C, which is procedures, meetings, records, and decisions, similar, similar to the title in Maryland state code. Procedures, the board shall elect a chairman from its membership, shall appoint a secretary, and shall, and shall prescribe rules in accordance. Now, this is paragraph one, procedures. The board shall, skipping the chairman and secretary, shall prescribe rules in accordance for the provisions of the land use article. Title four zoning subtitle three, Board of Appeals, annotated code of Maryland. In the, in the towns code for the Board of Appeals, which was amended. Recently. No, I'm sorry. No, it wasn't. It says procedures. The board shall elect a chairman from its membership and shall appoint a secretary and shall prescribe rules in accordance with the provisions of land use code. And section. Two, two dash one oh five. Two dash one oh five is Maryland code miscellaneous powers and duties. Under. Rules and records, sub paragraph three, it says a planning commission shall adopt rules for the conduct of its business. And if you look at. The county code. Or the county's planning commission on their website, it shows their rules of procedure. And in that rules of procedure, it says that they amend them as they see necessary. So. Doesn't say that they have to go to the council.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I don't think it's necessary. You can make your own judgment.
Any further discussion on this matter? Commissioner Brown, do you want to present a, a motion that, that's not, it's not necessary for the town council to approve? The rules and procedures of the planning and zoning?
Is that written?
I don't think, but for what purpose?
Right.
And I can make a motion that I want to park in a different part. I mean, it's, it's, there's nothing.
Oh, that says we have to.
Okay.
Therefore, it's, it's a standalone that we don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless somebody raises their hand.
That's my point. Thank you.
Circle.
Okay. It'll be it. I think it's a good point.
There you go.
And then we are also similar to the Board of Appeals in the fact.
Yeah, so Madam Chairman, we have a, a motion to approve these, is that right?
Yes.
We have a second?
Second with discussion.
And we're up to discussion, so.
So just in section nine, first of all, I think that. Commissioner Brown's suggestions are improvements. Section nine. It says, the Board of Appeals may request an advisory opinion from the planning commission on the application for special exceptions, variances, and interpretations. If an advisory opinion is requested from the commission regarding special exceptions, variances, and interpretations, the opinion shall be rendered within thirty days after submission. To the commission zone, to the commission. Noting on it, section two ninety dash thirty-two K. So that's what, that's what the code says. But I think in this section, we need to define. What constitutes a submission to the planning commission like we did elsewhere? Because if they submit it on the day after our meeting. Then the, we don't know when the clock starts. It can't possibly start on the day after our meeting. So I, I would like to add language that says. A submission. Through the planning commission from the Board of Appeals. May occur at any planning and zoning meeting. Meaning they, they can send it in advance in writing, so we're prepared, but.
So the thirty day clock would start at the next meeting.
Until, yes.
So what, so you want that to reflect that the clock will start when the actual, when planning and zoning actually gets. The, the request for the.
At their meeting, not in the mail.
Planning and zoning, when they physically receive it at a, and we address it at a meeting, that's when the clock starts.
Yes, at a commission meeting.
There is.
Commissioner Brown?
There is something like that on page two. Under applications, the third paragraph, which we can. Copy some of that, the date of the first planning commission meeting. And say that when the advisory opinion is presented. It'll be the date that the plan is filed with the commission and the date from which the requirement for approval. Under. Or reject, well, or. Approval, but.
Review?
Yeah.
For. Draft opinion?
I know, that, that's where I was going, yeah.
Is calculated. Date of the first planning commission meeting. When the request for. An advisory opinion.
After.
Under section nine. Is. The date from which the requirement.
So. Thirty day requirement will begin.
Will commence, or, yeah.
I'll second that edit.
Can we say it again? Because I think it's, it's, it's quite complex. So. Basically. We're saying that. The Board of Appeals. Advisory opinion from the planning commission. On applications for special exemptions. Shall be render, shall.
I'll be right there, third, okay.
Shall be rendered thirty days after receipt. After presentation to a planning and zoning. Meeting.
Well, they could submit it anytime, but the thirty days.
Begins of that.
Begin at the next.
Presentation of the planning and zoning commission meeting.
Yeah, yeah, the next, yeah, the next meeting. That's when the thirty days would.
Yes.
Right.
So you could make it very simple by just changing the sentence that says, the opinion shall be rendered within thirty days after the. Next planning commission meeting.
Very succinct.
Thirty days after the next plan.
Yeah.
Following.
What if the meeting day changes?
I.
It says whenever the next meeting is.
Commissioner Weaver?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
This was something I struggled with in our last meeting, and I just want to. If we make that decision in our rules and procedures, does that. Is that something that the rules and procedures can say, or will that violate a time? A timeline that is in other code that supersedes this?
What you're saying is that would this, this change be in conflict with?
Yeah, like just because we're saying that that, does that make sure that we, that our rules and procedures are staying within. Compliance of. Other rules and procedures that we have to adhere to?
I would think. That, I mean, this says submission to the commission. Without, there's no definition anywhere else that I'm aware of what submission to the commission means, and we're defining that term. So I don't think it's in conflict with the town. Code, but we could always ask the town to make a change to the code to define that term. Because it, I think it affects all our work. As, as you said, what if it, something. Stand the day after.
Yeah.
We have a meeting, and then the clock's running, but.
No, I fully support making sure that we have it set up, that we give ourselves enough time for those things. I just don't. The worry that I keep having is like, if we set that up as our rules and procedure, but then. An attorney comes and says that that wasn't within the timeframe that other code said we had to work in.
Well, I would suggest that by putting it into our rules and procedures, that's telling the town council. That that's what we think is submission to the commission. If a change is required, we could ask the town to make a change or tell us differently.
Right.
But that's what we think it means is the first meeting that we have af, after when it's, issues are presented to us.
Well, that, weren't you saying that the town, we weren't going to bring this? The town council for their. Like, wasn't the first part that you had said that we didn't need to have a motion on, that this isn't going to the town council anyway, so now we've. Said that.
It's on the, it, the board, well, I hope our procedures get published on our website. And as the Board of Appeals, it's the first thing on their website. And we can certainly send a note. Tell it to the town saying, this is the procedures we've adopted, and this is what we think it means. And if you. Think otherwise, let us know. We can change them at any time. Also addresses the question whether we can. With or without their approval.
Well, I, I certainly understand your concern about that, because certainly the Board of Appeals right now is facing a situation where. Actual planning and zoning voted on a regulation, not the ordinance. And because of that, that they do have different mandates versus a. Meeting requiring a public hearing versus not requiring a public hearing. So I understand that. But I think that, you know, simply, we're just trying to say. And I hope simply that the clock will start for when there is a request for an advisory opinion. Is actually when the planning commission receives at its meeting the request. And it has to be actually at the meeting, and then the thirty day clock begins at that time.
I think I have a suggestion for language that might accomplish that. You tell me if it will accomplish that.
I'll tell you.
You'll all tell me. He's the lawyer, that's why, pointed to him. But, but yes, everybody can tell me. Ahead of this whole paragraph. I'm suggesting that we say submissions for advisory opinions. From the planning commission can be made by submitting a request to the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. That defines how.
Yeah.
That is made.
But it doesn't address the thirty day timeline.
Well, the thirty day timeline is already delineated after submission. So. My thought, and I, I'll. Ask your. ask your opinion if this sentence accomplishes describing what a submission is.
Is that your motion?
That would be my motion, but I do want everybody's opinion if that does in fact accomplish that.
On Commissioner Blackwelder's potential motion?
That makes sense.
Okay. Satisfies any legal
There's several ways to word it.
Okay. Sarah?
I've been looking in the code while you guys were talking. Under 20, or sorry, 290-5, critical area site plan preparation is the only place so far I've found a timeline. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall approve, conditionally approve, or reject a site plan within 60 days from the filing of the application. So I don't know if you need to
So we're talking about when the Board of Appeals asks us for an, oh, so you're saying if they ask us for an advisory opinion, but now somebody else is on a 60-day clock? Is that
You're on, well, so I'm just looking kind of quickly in response to Commissioner Weaver's question, which is to say, are there any, are there any timelines? There were none in the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission's rules and procedures, but it's possible that the Board of Appeals is on the timeline for response.
Well, they are on 120-day timeline.
Okay, well then.
Right? To decide an appeals case after the last appeal, I think.
Okay.
But I would hope that they wouldn't put us up against their wall.
So read, Sarah, read that again, please.
So this is in the critical area. You have to approve, conditionally approve, or reject a site plan within 60 days from the filing of the application. So if, I'm just guessing, if filing of the application is the word used here, it may be the word used throughout, but I just wanted to provide you that
Right.
data for your discussion. I'll keep looking.
So did we, though, I think Commissioner Brown also came up with language that describes filing of the application?
It won't supersede the ordinance, whatever, if, if the ordinance
So what you're saying is if they file with, do we, we don't have language that defines filing?
I'm looking.
Yet. I think we established that last time.
You're right, there isn't any.
They're talking about filing with
All right, you're, Karen.
So that might be an agenda item for a future meeting.
Filing means?
A definition.
It's not a definition.
Yeah. So I don't know how we would proceed in this case, because they're on a 60-day, so they file an application. But, but it's a new application for a variance, is that correct? Like, if, if you're sending them to the Board of Appeals, because these are category two site plans, so these are category two site plans that you would have to then bring to us because they're in the critical area, and we have 60 days. And they would not be going to the Board of Appeals unless they have, are requesting a variance or unless they're refuting our decision, because we said no. So we have rendered an opinion within 60 days at that point. So that erases that 60-day clock. Right? Okay, and so now they're at the Board of Appeals. And so now we're back to where the Board of Appeals has 120 days to render their opinion on appeal. And we're only taking up 30 of those. So I think we're okay, or better off than we were before.
Yes, the only requirement I'm seeing in theirs is that 120 as well. So.
Do we need a motion to clarify section nine, the advisory opinion?
Or Larry, you can restate what your motion was. I don't
Say, in just a few words, if you take the last sentence of section nine, rendered within 30 days after the next meeting mission. Or we could Blackwelder suggested, fine submission with a sentence at the very beginning that says submission to the commission next meeting, is the first meeting that it is presented to the commission.
I think
Either way, it's the same result.
Well, within the 30 days after the next meeting of the commission, I think it's simpler to me than Commissioner Blackwelder's lead-ins. But open for discussion?
I will withdraw my motion and second Commissioner Brown's motion.
Any further discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the adoption of the rules of procedure? Then make a motion to accept them as noted with the changes offered tonight? All in favor? Aye? All opposed? Thank you. Now, that moves us to new business, which is fees and lieu, topic of the evening. And now we're moving to review section 290-30 of the zoning code, which addresses fines. Is that, but the fines are different than the fees and lieu. So are we just going to, or we should just address the fines?
I think the item on the business should just be called review of 290-30.
Then let's, has everybody had an opportunity to look at section 290-30? Said yes, yes? All right. Is there any questions? We, comments, Commissioner Blackwelder?
So I really appreciated what Sarah provided with regards to fees and lieu. And I would love to see something similar to compare fines. So my thought would be to direct Sarah to provide us with some context outside of our town to evaluate this section against.
In the previous format of her memo where she discussed about a brief explanation, and then what local towns and cities? Or
Yeah, however she feels it would be useful to us. I thought she put together a nice overview for the fees and lieu. Whatever she thinks would be helpful or helpful than my lack of knowledge, so.
Do we do we want that motion?
Yeah, I can, I can make that motion. Does anybody else have any?
Well, you can make the motion, and then we'll second it and see if there's any discussion.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to request that the town planner provide us with contextual information about fines in municipalities and areas outside of our town. And any recommendations or points of thought that she thinks we should consider.
Question? Never heard that language, points of thought. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Can I, can we go back to discussion? I, I think there are other things that we'll want to maybe talk about here with respect to this and do that all at once, rather than, because I, well, let me say this. I did appreciate that memo that you've put out and how it was very helpful in understanding what we were talking about. I find it hard to deal with these things ad hoc, off the cuff. Let's change this word, let's change that word. I would like to see a draft of what you suggest be changed. And then, and then we can talk about that. But I'm not sure what you think needs to be changed. I don't have a draft of that. So I would hope, along with Blackwelder's request, which I expect will be voted with approval. I'd like, I'd like to see a draft of what this would look like, what you think it should look like. For example, I mean, we're presumably getting rid of section 290-17 and 290-18, which, because with the critical area proposal we're making, we're combining all that into one. Isn't that right? That's what the, that's what it says at the top of that proposal. This replaces eight, 17, and 18.
Right, these references would change. I feel like municode can just do, change the references internally, but I don't know if that's accurate. I don't know, Civics Plus, whatever you guys use. These references aren't valid, but then they refer to similar items. But I, it may
But, so, so, I mean, obviously, that, the numbers of the, in the code will be determined by the town attorney. But let's see. In about the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7th line of the opening paragraph, fines and penalties, a person shall violate the provisions if he or she is the owner of property upon which a condition exists. Does that mean that someone who has a house that's 30 years old, and a condition violates whatever code we're talking about here, that they can be, they would be fined? I mean, they bought the house, five owners have had it. They bought the house the way it is, and now they get, because they are the property owner, where a condition exists?
Yeah, I think unfortunately, that's fairly typical. Like, if you, someone, you know, you buy a property, and there was just work done on it. If that work wasn't to code, or wasn't to zoning, even though you, you know, just bought this property, you didn't do the work, you can have to do the work, change it.
But also, the code changes. And over the 30 years, the code may change. You may not have had anything done to your property. You bought it, and the code has changed. And now it's not in accordance with the code. So you're subject to the fine?
That's usually subject to grandfathering provisions in the specific regulation.
Could you say that again, please?
So there's usually a grandfather, a grandfathering clause in the, like, in the critical area regulations, which this specifically is different. But the critical area regulations grandfather in certain lots. And in most regulations, in your ordinance is grandfather in something that existed before the code was adopted. So if we change lot coverage, everybody who exceeds that lot coverage does not need to go back and, you know, reduce the size of their house.
But there's certainly exceptions, like, I bought my house, and five years later, I built a pool and everything was fine. Then I sold my house, but now we see that there's no fencing around the pool. But in, in the interim, there has been a change that all pools must be enclosed with a fence.
Yes.
So now the next owner, they buy that property, there's no fence, but the code has changed, and now they're liable for, they're responsible for that, to be in compliance, although, you know, it wasn't like they had any responsibility about that, or knew about that. But now they're in violation, and so they're responsible for that.
Right, in that case, yes. I think, I think it may, there's no, there's no grandfathering in your fencing pool, because you don't want children falling
Because it's liability, right.
So it's, there's cases with grandfathering, which is, you know, the most sort of impactful situations. And then there's cases which aren't, which are adjustments that need to be made for liability and safety and all of that.
See, I, I recall grandfather clauses in the existing code, today's code, in, in section 17, I think. But I don't recall any in the code that we proposed. I have, I have to go back and look at that. But that, that would be a big concern to me. And, yeah, I would want a fence around my pool, whether the code said it or not. But, but the old code, for example, electricity in your house, you didn't, the common line and your ground was common, was connected together. Under the new code, you have a separate ground and common and power. So if you have a house that's, was built in 1940, like mine is, and you haven't done anything to it, and all of a sudden, you're going to get a fine of $1,000, because someone comes in and says, oh, you don't meet I would, I would, I'm concerned about the, to make sure that people are grandfathered appropriately. And not, this doesn't read that way to me. But as you say, it's just about, potentially just about the critical area.
So this section, the first section is not just about the critical area. The section A and B refer to all fines and all of, like, refer generally. And then it's section C.
What did you say, A and B refer to?
So A and B refer to, like, the zoning fines in general. So if you, like, when people come in with after the fact, they already did something, their fee is higher, because it's a fine. It's a, it's a fine and a fee. And that's what's determined by here. Then the critical area section is section C. So this top refers to the zoning penalties. And it
Anyway, that's something I'm very, I would be very concerned about, is to make sure that homeowners in our community are protected with a grandfather, an appropriate grandfathering clause. I also wondered the very last sentence, but excludes those acting in an I also wondered the very last sentence, but excludes those acting in an official capacity on behalf of the town. I'm not sure why. I, I can't think of an example of why, um, how that would work. So, so prop, so citizens of the town make a mistake and get fined, but if the town officials make a mistake, they don't. Um, I mean, I don't think that's fair. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that how, that's how it works. But I would want to think about that some more. In paragraph three on the first page, it's got the sections listed and the fine. Uh, for me, I'd like to see the name of that section, uh, there to help understand what it is. Um, let's see. I, I, actually, I haven't made a list of my concerns with this, but I have, I have a number of them that, uh, and, and under this, uh, I guess it's, it says, uh, shall be, let's see, violations subject to section shall be issued by the zoning administrator. If you, um, if, uh, if a violation, uh, if someone is cited for a violation. Um, and down in the last paragraph on the page, it says must complete the abatement action within thirty days or each day after is a separate violation. That can get pretty serious. Um, who, who can you appeal to in the interim to, uh, to toll this, uh, this fine? Who, who can you, who's the appellate person, authority that, that you can appeal to over the zoning administrator?
I think this goes to the Board of Appeals. Yeah. Or, well, yeah, the town. This is basically the zoning administrator is saying you violated the zoning ordinance, right? So that if, if you want to do something that's in violation of the zoning ordinance, right, then you would go to the Board of Appeals for a variance, correct? Or, I'm sorry, you would go.
Yeah, that's if you, if you, if you've been turned down by the zoning administrator and you want to get a variance, that's one process. But if you've been issued a citation by the zoning administrator, then you go to the Board of Appeals for, to get some hearing on that issue?
So you were issued a citation, right, because you were in violation of the zoning court, which means that you.
Someone says you're in violation of the zoning court. You don't think so. You have an issue.
But I would think if you go to the town.
You're appealing that decision.
You would have to, if the town is going to fine you, then you go to pay the fine or you don't want to pay the fine, then you, I would think that the town has a process, then, you know, you either pay this fine or fill out this form while you shouldn't. I don't know that it goes to the Board of Appeals.
Right. So.
And that's my question. Who does it go to? Where, how, what is the process for adjudicating all this? Uh, there's got to be an appeal process. There's got to be some way to toll this thirty days, put it, pause the thirty days, put another so that you can, you can say, let's get this sorted out of who's right and who's wrong here before, uh, before the end of thirty days kicks in. Oh, that's, that's one of my concerns. Um.
I think the town determines that myself, that, you know, just like if you're fined with any violation of, you know, you don't want to pay it. You think it's unjust. I think you go to the town and then they make that decision. Well, well, you either pay it or, you know, I know the town, for example, will say, well, we're gonna, you know, hold your water bill, uh, or, you know, unless you pay this fine. But they seem to have the recourse for that as far as to make sure that you comply with those fines.
Well, that may be, but I, I'm saying it should be spelled out here, who, who you would appeal to.
So it would be an interpretation. So I think you would appeal to the Board of Appeals. But your point on while they're appealing, can the town cut off their water? That's not appropriate.
The town has done that.
While they're in an appeal process?
Well, I know residents who were, the land that they were, a, a tree was taken down and they were saying that tree's not on my property. And the town determined the tree was on their property. And they either, they tried to appeal to the, the, uh, town administration. And basically they were told, you either pay this fine or we're going to terminate your water until it's paid.
Oh, I can, since this is a request to draft something, I can draft some language into here and we can discuss it further.
Place you might start, I would guess on the citation, it may say something. I don't, I've never seen one thankfully. But, uh, you know, at the bottom, it, it should say, if you disagree with this, you can appeal the so and so or something.
Written appeal.
There should, I mean, I would think you want to tell somebody that's been, uh, cited what their legal options are. I think only in fairness that, that you do that, that we do that, that the town. So I think it should, needs to be spelled out. And that's one way. That's all I have.
I think that might be, uh.
I'm taking notes.
You know, like if you've been cited for having, uh, a barking dog and, and then they determine that's a, you know, you, you're issued a, a violation for that, just like any other violation, you know, I believe it was probably there's a, you know.
I have no authority over barking dog.
We're going to change that.
A lot of this has to do with you did something without a permit. So that's part of the, you did something without a but, right. But I'll, I, I can definitely work up a draft in addition to the fines. I, I think you guys will potentially have more. So the advice you give me before I work up a draft is, is, is useful because then I can address your concerns ahead of time.
Okay. Does anybody else have any?
I have a question. Um, in section C, and it seems like two, three continues, there's always this idea that if the person violating undertook the acts which demonstrate the violation was a mistake or unintentional violation, then the conviction is one thing. And then, then it's a different fine if it was intentional. Who's determining?
Meditated.
Like, is that, yeah. That changes the fines quite a bit.
Right. I don't know. I, I'm wondering if it has to do with like, you applied for a permit, you got denied, you went and did it anyway. Now we know you did it intentionally. Or if there's a different interpretation. But that's how I would interpret that.
Oh.
It's funny because the model ordinance has that very same language. And when I read the model ordinance, I was thinking the same thing. And then I, I abandoned shit because I, it, it is something, you're right, that's over certainly our heads. So.
Like, you know, because there are times where you're like, you knew what you were doing, but you were, you know.
I think the town would have to have some proof that they knew what they were doing before the town would issue that higher fine. Like, they came in and asked and then went away and did it anyway. Or, and there's a record of that. Or they applied for a permit and were denied and did it. I'm not an attorney, but I think the attorney would want some proof.
Okay, so you're mostly then under most circumstances, we're going to probably say if this, they get the benefit of the doubt. Unless there's rules, yeah.
The benefit of, it's, it's kind of a proof situation. Unless the attorney tells me something different, which I doubt they would.
Well, I can tell you as one who used to issue violations for things, everybody is always innocent. Absolutely. Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm in a rush to the hospital. And there I see the smoke coming off the french fries that they stopped in McDonald's. You know, everybody's innocent and, and so.
So, you know, because then it does be.
Without proof.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Because then you almost set up, I mean, I don't know how nefarious any of it, but then somebody going to want to ever ask or just do it because now you have proof.
Well, there's always the permission and forgiveness.
Exactly. That seems to really land to that. But I was just curious who, because it kept, kept coming up, I was wondering who that conviction comes from.
It definitely doesn't come from me.
Yeah.
Um, but that's a question that I can ask and put in the memo.
And now we're all curious to know, who is the hammer in town administration? Anyone else have any further question, comment they want to?
I will review it and provide both a memo and a draft.
So. Yeah. Has there been any update? I see this is, this is actually reflective of November the first, twenty eleven. There's been no change to this since then?
Not to my knowledge, but I.
Yeah, I'm just.
Um, this is the most recent.
That's twelve years. Okay.
Last amended in two thousand six.
What's, well, the date at the bottom says eleven, one, twenty eleven. I didn't know.
If you read at the very top, section two ninety dash thirty violations and penalties amended February sixteenth, two thousand six by that ordinance. And then if you look.
So it's seventeen years old.
Then if you look on the second page, the other amendment was, uh, two thousand five. So.
Page three says two thousand, no, I'm, I'm.
I think that date at the bottom is when it was printed or something. When, when.
Even more illuminating. Okay.
I think we have Commissioner Blackwelder's motion on the table.
Yeah, have we a second? All right. Um, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. The next, uh, item on the new business is signage. So I, I think, uh, one of the reasons to bring this back up is I, I don't think, uh, this is in an experience where there are there's signage around the town, obviously, and that it, it's come to notice that some compliance with the sign, the signage is not being actually affected. And then, so it was recommended that maybe we look at the signage in the town. So we have a better understanding and actually compliant of the, uh, regulations. So I think that's one of the reasons that prompted, uh, this as a topic for discussion. We're going to find that out. So, um, so, you know, obviously it's very important that the, you know, the signs perform an, an important function in the town. You know, they identify and promote properties, businesses, services. But it's also, you know, important that their appearance and on the property as well as to the impact to the, sir, you know, the environment, um, as well as public health, safety i- is important for us to, um, certainly look at, um, and make sure that the use of the signs are reasonable and, and keep the character of the town. So, um, did everybody have an opportunity to look at the language with the signs? Or was there, was, there's no documents. That's good. Is it? Oh, okay. Okay. So has everybody had the opportunity to look at the signs? Document, going through it? So, do we have, uh, any comment? Commissioner Weaver?
Question, because I are, is, is it that we're interested in changing it or enforcing it?
Um, I think it's for me, uh, I think it's more a, an issue of enforcement of it because I think there's been violations. For example, um, you know, uh, specifically, I know that the sign on, uh, nineteen thirty-six is allowed to, i- it's larger than I think it is allowed in the regulation. But during the holiday season, it's permitted.
Yeah.
But outside of the holiday season, it is not permitted. But I think there's no actual enforcement of that outside the holiday season. Because I think as far as the, the lighting, um, you can have, for example, the green light, um, where normally you couldn't have the green light at any other time except during the holiday. Commissioner Rothke?
As a former Realtor, under, uh, general
No page numbers. Don't go for it.
For houses for sale. The special, the special for sale. There are new signs, there are open house signs, the county for sale, all very specific. When we can put up, you know, the house sign, when to put them down. It can't be left up, which is confusing to tell, never mind totally. So I think we ought to have something here, certainly about that. And all the new subdivision, sending these through with new subdivision, I believe, it's on a Friday, and then sign just go up everywhere. And I think if there was in the town, we ought to address the fact that we don't want them left up.
Right.
If they go.
Well, uh, they, there should be the responsibility to remove them, which we, they don't. I mean, look at, look at during an election, how many times do we then live with, yep, the election's over and I won and yeah, nobody's directed to then remove them. So yes. I'm sorry, Commissioner Weaver, did you have a comment? Not allowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aren't they currently, they do have to take them down on Sunday nights though, in town too? Like that they can go up on Friday nights and come down on Sundays? Or is that?
Time regulation, I don't see that.
Is that just like in the county? I just know, I always see those cars driving around. Yeah. Very strict. Okay. But we don't have that.
I'm looking here and I didn't.
Under, um, E, oh, sorry, under F, um, signs permitted in residential districts. There's some temporary sign regulations, so F, G, H, I, and J under there. And, um, I believe they're also under the And, um, I believe they're also under the. So F signs permitted in residential areas. Then it says one on premises signs. And then, um, the last. Five letters are about temporary signs, like different types of temporary signs. Um, and some of them have requirements as to when they, um, need to be removed. So there's one about property development, um, that needs to be removed immediately. Then there's temporary contractors and architect signs. Temporary signs announcing a campaign driver event. Um, those are 60 days per, not more than 60 days per year. Um, and not more than five days after the event. So there are some.
Restrictions.
Restrictions, but, um, that's not to say that, that couldn't, you don't want to adjust and add restrictions. I just wanted to point out where there's some existing.
Well, you know, I, I mean, I, I. I certainly, that's a, you know, I understand the, the connotation of that and it, and it's negative, but it, you know. It's a matter of safety. It's a matter of, you know, protection of the environment. I mean, you know. The whole, if the whole area is blanketed with signs, they just remain up and nobody does anything about them, you know? Then they, perhaps they obscure other signs as far as a crosswalk, as far as, um, lighting. So I, I think it's, it's important that. Yeah, nobody wants to be the sign police, but at the same time, you know, you want to make sure that the appearance of the town, people are safe. Um, and we're just not, you know, that there's compliance as far as the design. So I'm not sure who is. Responsible for affecting that, but I, I think it's important, um, that we have it. But you don't necessarily in Cal, here in Calvert, if that's, yeah. I mean, I, you know, uh. It's certainly, uh. I mean, it's awfully nice of the town to do that because, you know, I, without anybody being ascribed that task, but I think it's important. But it, it would be interesting to know, uh, for the violation of that. Not just the temp, you know, I mean, these are mostly temporary signs you're speaking of, but, you know, all of them, you know. To have permanent signage, you need to permit. And I guess whoever issues a permit. They're saying the zoning.
That falls under the fines and violations of the zoning ordinance, right?
Yeah. The zoning inspector issues a sign permit.
Right. Not for temporary signs.
No, right, right. I'm just saying.
Right.
So, so I guess it's the. Who is the zoning inspector or town?
On the table of it will be Holly, the zoning administrator.
Yeah, I think.
She's the zoning administrator or the zoning inspector?
That's what the work session.
That's interesting.
Was, it was presented at the work session that Holly would be the zoning administrator.
But not inspector? So I would imagine she would approve them, but I don't think she would be Commissioner Brown.
Don't, don't we have a zoning inspector that presents a report at every zoning enforcement?
Code enforcement.
That presents a report at every town council meeting. So that's what you're talking about.
Well, I guess we need to clarify that because this is zoning inspector, not code enforcement.
May just need to be clarified because zoning inspector is only referred to. Like in, it's normally zoning administrator and here it says zoning inspector. So it might just be a language consistency.
Is that typical that the town administrator is also the zoning administrator?
I mean, it can be however, it, it can be done a variety of ways.
However, right, different ways.
Yeah.
Alltown, Mayberry.
Right.
Andy's the sheriff and he's also the justice of the peace and he's also.
We all wear lots of hats.
I thought, I, I was surprised to see that, to be honest.
So. I just want to come back to the signs. Did you want to talk about? The compatibility or design, or did you just want to talk about enforcement?
I, I, I'm happy to talk about the compatibility, design.
I, I just want to make sure I'm getting.
Yeah, no.
Like direction on what you guys want me to do with it and.
No, I, I think it's, um, I think it's important, like I said, because it, you know, to me, it's no different than the building compatibility. You know, in the neighborhoods and the residential, um, that they reflect. The, uh, they look like they're in concert with one another and not, you know. I've got a flashing light, a flashing sign here and then over here I don't, um, I have one larger, you know? So I think there should absolutely be compatibility. I don't know. Anybody else have a comment?
I have a couple of comments. I think it's Chairman Brown's turn.
Okay.
Brown's turn.
All right.
Um, yeah, I, I've read through this. I, for those of you who were not here, when we dealt with, uh. Issue with rod and reel in the parking garage and they wanted to make some changes right before Christmas. I guess that's. Or something. Brushed through some, um, uh, actually, and, uh, a change to their site plan was presented for the first time. At a commission meeting after we had dealt with one that we had had a chance to review. Then they said, oh, by the way, there's one more. And the zoning administrator, yeah, that's right. We've got one more. And we talked about, uh, flags on the, uh. Parking garage and we all kind of shrugged our shoulders and said. They all said, yeah, that's all right. And then after, after the meeting, uh. Uh, the zoning administrator went back and looked at this section and said, oh my goodness, we've, uh. If we violated our, our code, we can't do that. And so we had to rescind it and, and relook at it and it was a mess. Um, so. This is important and, and we need to make sure it's clear for people to follow. And that's one of the reasons. I wanted to put into our procedures that the, uh, we get the stuff. A couple of weeks in advance to look at, so we have a chance to look at it. We get a town, uh, zoning planner to, to, to give us a, a note on what they think. And, and so we have all the information. We don't know this. I don't know this stuff and I can't deal with it on the fly, even though we have a book here. Um, um, but as, as, so as I go through, that's the context I'm looking at as I go through this for the first time recently. Um, and, uh. Is, uh, is a banner covered in this?
Temporary.
I think it is actually. On the last page, it says pennants and banners. No words are advertising, uh, are permitted. Um, but I think it also says in here that, uh, homes are on residences are only allowed one sign or. I guess a, a banner or, or flag would apply to them. Home has its numbers on the side, then, and you can't have a flag, I guess, because that's true, right? So I, I'm, um. You're shaking your head.
I know, I'm just confused. If it has numbers, you can't have a flag?
Well, aren't numbers, aren't the numbers a sign? I think it says that here, that the, it gives.
The numbers are legally required.
You have to have them, right? But I think it says that there are numbers, it gives, prescribes some si, side of, size of numbers and. You can only have a one by, approximately one by one foot sign on your house. Um, anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that, that's a sign, that's a sign referring to the number, not the numbers on your house. It's like. Sometimes historic houses might have their name on a little plaque out front, or if you have an ADU and you have two. You know, dwelling units, you might have a sign, but they want that to be consistent with the size of it.
A lot of people put up the numbers on the house and so and so establish.
Right. Yes, that's what that's.
So that's a sign, right?
That is a sign.
Yes. And so that means they can't have a flag. Banner with flowers on it. Lots of people have these little banners.
Why? Can they not have a?
I'm kind of fond of the American flag, not so much Maryland, but, and I have some college flags. I just wonder how, you know, people cover their house, houses with banners and flags and. And then you get down to the one, the part that says, uh. Oh, here we are on the last page. Uh, pennants and banners parentheses with no words or advertising are permitted. Or periods not to exceed 14 days prior to N event. But not to exceed 30 days per year. Uh, I'm not sure if that applies to my favorite flag or these other flags I mentioned. Um, but no words are advertising. Lots of people now have flags with things on it.
Logos. Logos like college, the, the Nittany Lion or their.
Or, uh, or. Political flags, Trump, Biden, um, Black Lives Matter. Um, I mean, there are lots of them with words on them and those would apparently account, would count under this. So I, I just think. We need to look at it and make sure that we aren't, or if we're stepping on someone's toes, we intend to. And not accidentally. That's my comment. And of course, you sort of mentioned political signs. Um, the season is coming up and that, you know. We need to make sure we have a consistent rule that everybody can follow. Maybe the question about. Uh, picking up signs, you see them all over after the election. Maybe you require the name of a, name and phone number of an individual responsible for that sign on the bottom of any of these or something.
Most places just pick them up and throw them out.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, but right. Yeah. Well, if, if the person for my political, if your political signs, you then win and you don't pick them up. Hey, it seems to me, a phone call to the, the candidate and say, hey, the election's over. Congratulations on your win. Come get your signs or we're going to find.
The White House comment line?
Yeah.
My wife works it. It won't, uh, it won't get to. Anyway, I, 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 that's an idea. There are prob, there are better ideas, but I think things we need to, uh, think about because. Season's coming up. That's my comment.
Commissioner Weaver, did you have a comment?
No comment, just seeking clarity on what we're trying to do at this point. If we're trying. To, to write more code or we're trying to determine who we have enforce existing code.
Yeah. I, I think, um, I think we're actually trying to do both. We're trying to make sure that this is, as Commissioner Brown said, as clear as possible, how it applies and. Who, who is actually, uh. If there is enforcement to be done, who is actually responsible, but to make sure that, um. As I said, there are certain, there are signs right now around the, around the town that are in violation and, um, they just continue, you know. Continue. So not just necessarily enforcement, but to make sure that we are all compatible and in compliance and. Right, if. Right, if appropriate, but, um, I, I just think we have, it, it's important that we looked at signs in the town, especially, um. In regards to compatibility with, with the neighborhoods, the environment and the safety. So.
If I have one more comment, the.
You said you can.
We have, uh, it is the holiday season too, and there's a lot going on with holiday season. I saw one garage that had a. A banner covering the entire garage door, which I think is bigger than two by two. Um, and so. We should, I think, address that in here so people know, uh, I mean, I, I want them all, but, you know, it's just, uh. Make sure it covers the territory.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, and I love it, all the lighting and the, and the lights and the, and the signs, uh, um, in, um. You know, Chesapeake, not Chesapeake Station, Chesapeake, uh.
Village.
Yes. Yeah. Chesapeake Village and I love it and I, I drive through there and I drive people through there, but you know, absolutely right. It's the whole garage. It's, it's, it's everything and. And now the luminaries are all on the, on the street. So it's, uh, but yes, um. We should look at that. Um, Commissioner Blackwelder? Commissioner Brown, are you finished? Okay.
So my comment is this was Cindy's suggestion for an agenda item. So I would definitely prefer that we. Put this back on the agenda for when Cindy is here. My thoughts on. Signs in general is that I would like to see our commission. Recommend to the town council that they contract a company to. Develop design standards for the town. That includes signage, uh, but it would also include, um. Fixtures and, and different elements for what gets built and put in the town. That we could follow as we build projects because, um. It seems like the town is interested in doing little, small little projects and there's no continuity to them. Um, and you would need that continuity in the signs too, just to get a, a good cohesive. Feel in your town. And, and I know Chris was a big advocate for that. I've been advocating that. Since I've been involved with the town and I know we've mentioned it several times on this commission. I don't know that we've ever formally recommended it, you, you know, they, they don't need our formal recommendation. Or things, um. But we can, you know, we, we can only do what we can do. They're the decision makers. We can recommend all day long and, and they may not do it. You know, we've recommended various things that they have done and various things that they have not done. But as a commission, I, I, I wouldn't mind making that recommendation to them. The budget cycle is coming up. So I would. Appreciate if we made that sooner in time for the budget cycle. It, you know, it, it would probably cost, it costs for the. For R K and K to come and do the walkability study. It was, I think, do you remember how much it was, Jan? I think it was between 30 and $70,000 to do that whole study, all of that outreach, um, do the GIS. I would imagine that. I would imagine that design standards would be less because there is not that alignment component or the GIS component, but there, but I would expect that it would involve the outreach process because it, you know, what the town looks like and what we build matters to people and, and we should take their input. So I, I would be interested, you know, I have a certain aesthetic style that I prefer, but it might not meld with everybody else's. So I think a collective opinion on signs would be a good thing to have and something that can guide different things in a long space of time. And then I, I see Rachel has a comment, so.
A question.
Okay.
What kinds of signs would that cover?
So, for instance, North Beach has design standards and it reaches beyond signs, but it addresses commercial signs, it would address, you know, I don't know if it would so much address temporary signs, we could probably do that on our own. But certainly like commercial development signs, things like that, but I'm kind of housing this into that. For instance, you know, if we put up signs for our parks, signs for a trail, signs for whatever, in addition, if we put up different lights, we have a bunch of different kinds of lights going on in our town. I, like, we have a very modern looking industrial light that's lighting the sign that leads to Chesapeake Beach on the left when you come into the beach. But our signs on the bridge are, to me, more, well, I don't even know what the style would be, but certainly not modern along our bridge. And I think a lot of towns, once, you know, once they evolve beyond just like kind of a pile of houses, make these design standards so that as they develop, they have a cohesiveness about them and a, and a placemaking element about them. And I think that would do our town a lot of good to have that so that when we do this project this year and then seven years later, there's another project, different contractor, different council, different everything, they have these standards to look back on and then so that both of these two projects done within a span of 10 years are cohesive within the town. And I would say the same thing about signs. So that's, that's my spiel on design standards. And we can make that as elaborate, you know, you, you could even add in that because we do need some building code standards in some areas of town. That could become part of that or that could be completely separate. But that's my spiel on design standards. And then I have, there, there's one sign that I see often that is a, a pet peeve of mine and it's the smokeaholic sign. And I would love to see something that says, you can't put up signs all over the place reminding people that they might want to smoke or there, there's, I know there's rules on advertising for controlled substances like nicotine and different stuff. We are probably going to get a cannabis dispensary and I would be interested what we can do in the area of signage to prevent that situation all over town. It's unfortunate, I think, that we're getting, that we might be getting that, but all the tea leaves I see and there's, there's probably going to be, I mean, there's a public hearing at the next town council meeting on this topic.
The state has approved that.
What's that?
I thought the state approved that.
The state's approved that, the town has some.
Right.
Opportunities to mitigate it in different ways. I don't know that they will and I just read in the paper that Calvert County is getting, likely to get three dispensaries, that's what the paper said. I don't know what our leaders are doing to pave the way or prevent that from coming. We will watch and find out, but if that were to come, I would certainly want to address signage related to that.
Any further comment?
Wait for Cindy, design standards, I hate the smokeaholic sign. I can't think of any related to sign.
Now Weaver? Commissioner Redkay? Anything further? Um, yeah, I just want to say, yes, I know Vice Chair Greengold mentioned this as well. I think Chris had mentioned it also about the signage that i, in compliance with our compatibility standards that we should address signage because it, it's critical for all the reasons that have been mentioned earlier tonight. So absolutely, I mean, it's a few minutes before nine, so that's, we've been meeting almost three hours, so I don't think we're going any further with this tonight. So absolutely, Vice Chair Greengold will certainly have the opportunity because we're, this will be old business next, at our next meeting that, that we want to address greater in its entirety. So obviously if you, Commissioner Redkay is going to look into the real estate aspect and certainly the, the signage associated with the cannabis dispensary. I, I myself don't believe that we need a separate design standards commission or study. I think if we review the, the signage here, I, I think we can address, I don't know that we necessarily need uniformed design standards, I think they should be compatible, but I think if it's very specific about design and size and time as far as it, it being displayed and what type of signs can be displayed where, for what purpose, I think that would cover and we wouldn't necessarily need design standards. You know, I, that's just my opinion. Certainly, absolute, it's all up for discussion next month, so that's my only comment. Sarah, do you have any comment to make?
I, I think some sort of compatibility, consistency, design standards might be desirable in certain areas, especially usually like a downtown sort of shopping area helps tie things together, so.
Uniformity, I, I agree.
Yeah, you can usually create like a district with that as well if that's sort of, that's a, that's an in-between sort of compromise between the two thoughts on that.
All right, so we will discuss that next month. And then I think it's 2100 hours, 9:00 PM. So I, I see that there's the site approval plan process. I, my recommendation is that three hours is lengthy enough for our meeting. It seems with the new, with the new time, we've now gone to, we moved the time back, I thought so we would possibly have two hour meetings, but now it seems like the 6:00 PM timeline has now, the last several meetings determined the three hour time meeting, so. And I know there's much to do and I just want to say again, thank you to all the commissioners, to all of you, to the commission clerk, to the town planner for all the work you do and for your dedication and your commitment. It's, it's very obvious that this is not, you're not cavalier about your commitment or your interest or your, your effect to do a great job. So I just want to thank you and again, wish everybody a blessed and joyful holiday season and all, all good health in the, in the new year. So on that point, if anybody wants to make a motion for us to either go forth or cease, please do so now. Do.
One second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Same to you. A joyful, a joyful and happy holiday to all.
Potentially on January 4th, anybody who's going to our.
No, that's the Golden Bachelor wedding, I'm sorry, I won't be able to make that.